So first, I would like to acknowledge that the land in which we gather is the traditional unseated territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation called Orim. Just want to give a shout out to Tremploy Incorporated that opened their new facility last week. It's a 24,000 square foot facility. They had about 90 or more attendees, a lot worked there, and it was a pretty exciting day. So congratulations to the fundraisers and the workers, staff at Tremploy Incorporated. And I want to give a shout out to Councillor John McAleer. Celebrated his birthday this past weekend. Happy birthday, Johnny, Councillor McAleer. We won't ask your age, but we'll just go on to declarations of conflict of interest. Any declarations? Okay, approval of the agenda. Councillor Twill has asked to go with 4C. The order would be, one, provincial government host public meeting in regards to outreach centre. Two, what would that be? Number two, conduct an independent investigation in regards to drug use, drug sale, usage on or near premises of outreach centre. And three, establish a municipal bylaw to prohibit the distribution of drug paraphernalia. So that's the order. Any issues? Good. The other issue is that I've asked Eleanor just to read aloud the procedural bylaw as it pertains to speaking to a question. Can we just get a reminder?
Thank you, Your Worship. So this is section 37.2 of the speaking to question as part of the procedural bylaw. So 37.2A, no member shall speak more than twice to the question without a majority vote of those council members present, except in explanation of a material part of his or her speech, which may have been misconceived, and in doing so, the member is not to introduce a new matter. B, a member shall not speak for the first time more than five minutes. And C, no member shall, without the majority vote of those council members present, speak a second time to the same question or in reply for longer than three minutes.
Councillor Twill.
So having read what you just said from the municipal bylaw...
Procedural bylaw. Procedural bylaw.
Procedural bylaw. So is that when we're voting on a resolution?
Yeah, question. Question or resolution, correct? Just read it again there.
So, no, I'll try it again. So that's dealing with a resolution. When councils entertaining a resolution, you have two goals at it. First is five minutes, first time to speak, and your second time to speak is three minutes. Okay. But if you're having a general discussion that doesn't include a resolution, there's really no limits as to how many times you could speak.
Yes, there is.
No, hold it, hold it. Just a minute. I'm asking the question. So, that's my question. Because there seems to be a misconception or misunderstanding as to when you're speaking, for example, under a committee report, there could be four or five issues that you'd like to address the Chair or the respective manager of that said department. And I don't believe it states in the Municipal Government Act, you're precluded from speaking more than twice, especially when you're trying to address several issues that represent your constituency.
So I think we've discussed this before. It's question. It doesn't say resolution. So a question could be a report. And our agenda is quite long, and I know that I would like to get through it because we have some important issues on that agenda. So approval of the agenda, so I need a mover. Move by Councillor McKennan, second by Councillor Ramsay. Are those in favor? Yes, just go ahead.
I just got a question on that. The closed session. I'm just wondering...
Can you just put your mic down? So...
Is there a need for the closed session to be enclosed, the Housing Accelerator Fund?
Yeah, I will turn that over to the CAO.
Thank you, Your Worship. And through to Councillor Bernard. Yes, because it's discussion of the actual contract. So negotiation of the actual contract for the Housing Accelerator Fund.
Okay. So that, do you think it could prejudice the negotiations?
Yes. And the federal government has asked that those be held enclosed.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
But in terms of voting on the half, that will be a public vote. One, planning resolution?
That's all.
On that? Okay, go ahead.
So is that resolution, is that relevant to the resolution that was passed by city council where it outlined specific sites as to where, you know, council is supposedly looking at creating multiple units? For example, experimental farm property, Velvet Air Avenue. Is that tied into that? Is that all interconnected?
So this is where there was confusion for the media. There were two resolutions passed by council on this issue. October 10th to give support to the federal government's Housing Accelerator Fund. In that backgrounder, and that backgrounder was part of all the packages that went out, it listed the experimental farm as one of the areas. So we had another resolution that was passed on November 2nd, and that resolution took the experimental farm out of one of those. It withdrew that initiative on the experimental farm. So the information that was given to the media was incorrect. The second resolution did not have the experimental farm as part of the plan for the HAF Accelerator Housing Fund. Councillor Twill?
So, once again, for the public record, because this is extremely important, very important regarding the experimental farm. So for the public record, the experimental farm in no which way, shape, or form is tied to any funding agreements, tied to any resolutions by city council or from the federal minister, as he had outlined his correspondence to you, Mr. Mayor, and then correspondence that went back to the federal government, and in particular, the federal minister of housing. So just, I want to be able to say to my constituents that the experimental farm is completely and totally off the table.
Yeah, it was in the backgrounder for November...
I know it's in the background.
No, no, listen. It was in the backgrounder for November 2nd.
Right.
And those that read the backgrounder would have known.
Yeah, I understand that. I voted for the funding. I didn't vote for the experimental farm.
So it's not there.
Okay, so it's gone.
Clear? Yes. Okay. So just that the media knows, someone contacted the media and said that it was in there.
I saw the media with the member, Paul, and they were...
You know, just one second, just... So clarify, November 2nd, it was excluded. Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to ask the Chair of Planning to present what she has, and then followed by the resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Your Worship and council. So there's one resolution for this evening, and that is a resolution for a temporary major variance from the government of Prince Edward Island to move two modular units to the Park Street location, formerly known as the government garage, to relocate the provincial outreach centre for a period not more than one year. And so that is the resolution. The planning board met last week, and hopefully everyone had an opportunity to watch the meeting. And so once CAO Mohammed reads the resolution, then we can have some discussion. So, thank you.
Okay. So we're going to get the CAO to read the resolution? No, no, she's reading the resolution.
Just a point of clarification.
Yep, just when you get resolution, the floor?
Of course you need to...
Nope, it's going on the floor first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Councillor McCabe. Be resolved that request for a temporary use major variance to permit a community outreach centre to operate within two combined modular units, 60 foot by 149.7 feet, for a period of up to one year from the date of occupancy permit issuance on the southwesterly portion of the property located at 15 Park Street, PID 365593. Be approved by council subject to the following conditions. One, the province provides City of Charlottetown Police Services with funding to the satisfaction of the City of Charlottetown Chief Police under a Safe Spaces Agreement for two additional police officers for a total of six police officers, including four for the temporary shelter, to serve the area of influence, which represents a 20-minute walking radius around the boundary of the subject property, for a period of one year from the date of occupancy permit issuance. Two, the province designs and installs fire sprinkler systems within the modular structures being occupied for the outreach centre to the satisfaction of the City of Charlottetown Fire Chief. Three, that the requirement for the province to fund and operate daily garbage and safe disposal cleanup services related to the overnight shelter within the public right-of-way throughout the area of influence be extended for the period of time the community outreach centre operates. And four, any future planning and development applications by the province for the subject property shall be fully compliant with the requirements set out in section 3.5A, Eastern Gateway Waterfront of the City of Charlottetown Official Plan, and section 44, Comprehensive Development Area Zone of the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw. An extension of the temporary use major variance approval shall be prohibited.
Okay, the resolution's on the floor. I have Councillor Maturt and Councillor McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good evening, council, members of the gallery. I stand before you this evening to ask that you consider the current outreach centres' model's negative impact on our city, and if moved to Park Street, it will likely continue and may even worsen. Relocating is just a lift-and-shift approach, pushing the problems from one area to another. If the outreach centre is relocated, this will be the fifth time in a few short years. This tells us that the issues and problems associated with the outreach centre in our city need to be seriously addressed, and a more permanent plan is what should have been presented to the planning board and council here this evening. Over the past year, I've met many residents in and around the current location of the outreach centre and the proposed new location on Park Street. As the councillor for Park Street, I stand here this evening being the voice of the majority to express their concerns and opposition to the resolution of the outreach centre to Park Street for the following reasons. Residents are generally concerned for their safety, their property, their well-being. Several children live near the facility, many seniors live in the area, and there are no guarantees or assurances that anything will be different by relocating the outreach centre. Seeing what has rapidly transpired over the past year in and around Houston Street gives no one comfort that this will be any better located 10 blocks away. The only slightly positive outcome here is removing the harms way of children in two public schools. Relocating Park Street will have a negative impact on nearby residents, several businesses, major entertainment venues, Hall and College, parks, active transportation pathways. Residents foresee Joe Gis Park becoming a place to hang out and continue the activities that have been witnessed on Houston Street. Families will feel unsafe using the park, which is a shame. The entrance to the outreach centre is in the centre of two parking lots used for events in Hall and College, and this has raised concerns about the potential property damage and theft. Some residents are putting their homes up for sale as they fear the value of their property will be drastically affected by having these services embedded in residential areas. The current outreach model has proven problematic in many ways. It needs to serve those in need correctly and has negatively impacted the community. Residents fear relocating the outreach centre will only enhance the current issues and create further chaos, fear, and disruption to people's lives. Many residents within the city surrounding the outreach centre have been subjected to illegal drug use, drug dealing, theft, discarded needles, property damage, and most recently, a severe criminal offence. Residents are frustrated and fed up and want a better quality of life in their neighborhoods. The city has received four temporary variances towards the property regarding the emergency shelter, the overdose prevention site, and the outreach centre. Very little community engagement or consultation has allowed residents to express their concerns. Residents feel they have yet to have an opportunity to truly express their concerns in an open two-way discussion through public meetings, town halls, or surveys, especially on the relocation of the outreach centre. Centralizing these services in one area will undoubtedly have a negative impact on those with different life goals and intentions. Placing the outreach centre beside the temporary shelter mixes two demographics and puts the unhoused and those in active recovery in a dangerous and vulnerable position. This cannot be done safely and discreetly. There is much concern over the management of the outreach centre. Many questions have been raised as to why the facility is not operated by trained government professionals in areas of addictions, mental health, and homelessness. It was recently stated that the outreach centre permitted the use of illegal drugs on the premises. If this is to be a zero tolerance policy for the new location, what will prevent use of open-air drugs outside of the facility like Joe Gis Park? Who's going to monitor and hold drug users accountable for drug use in the surrounding area? How does the province plan to collect data related to the client's impacts and community impacts of the outreach centre if it moves to Park Street? What metrics of success/failure will the province monitor to determine if the outreach centre's location and operations are appropriately serving its clients and resident businesses in the area of influence? There are questions and concerns that are unknown by the residents due to no public consultation. The major variance is looking at it from the perspective of land use and community impact. The four applications for this site have been deemed temporary. This raises the question of the long-term plan for delivering these services. If Park Street is the long-term plan, many factors must be considered and obstacles must be overcome. The Eastern Gateway Master Plan has designated this area as the site for a multi-use sports and entertainment complex. The long-term vision for the plan incorporates surrounding land as an area for high-order commercial and offices uses that could also support the multi-use sport and entertainment complex. Significant changes and public consultation would require to amend the Eastern Gateway and official plans to establish residency for these services on the site. This would take months or over a year to support such an application entirely. Section 3.39 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw states, "An application for a development and/or building permit shall be rejected if the proposed development would be detrimental to the convenience, health, or safety of the occupants or residents in the vicinity of the general public." Based on the current events, I'm confident that the proposed development would be detrimental to the convenience, the health, and safety of the occupants or residents. The property is approximately 6.4 acres in size. The full scope of the environmental impact report is still being determined at the time of this vote.
Yeah.
If the property is deemed safe, another more impactful use for the land would be affordable housing, serving many different demographics. Carleen Donnelly presented at the planning board meeting and spoke to a housing-first model. This property would allow for a tremendous amount of housing on that much acreage.
Okay. Councillor, you're just over the time.
I'd like to finish.
Yeah, we...
I generally understand the need for these services and support and the support they provide to our vulnerable population. Moving to Park Street will not change the behaviours and actions of some. Although it was indicated that changes would be made regarding the operating model of Park Street, the outreach centre has lost the community's trust. Therefore, the outreach centre should be closed until a more comprehensive service delivery model is developed and suitable locations are identified to properly support addictions, homelessness, and outreach services that benefit all communities across Prince Edward Island. I propose to government look at alternative models like decentralizing the services, so moving case management outside of the outreach centre to different facilities. Create several satellite warming centres across the city to allow people in need to escape the cold. They can be operated to allow for smaller groups, offer warm beverage, food, with strict policies on drug and alcohol use. Provide free and accessible busing for clients to use the warming centres. Only after a comprehensive service delivery model is developed, reinstate the outreach programme to its intended mandate in a smaller central location within Charlottetown, design it so that you receive the necessary support offered within the mandate and scope of the programme. I'm confident the services of the outreach can continue to be offered throughout other community support programmes and partners currently available in Charlottetown during this time of resetting and remodeling. Suppose the government is adamant that a single location for all services is the best course of action. In that case, I strongly suggest a new location that is not impacting residential areas, businesses, schools, parks be chosen. The property located by the old Sherwood home next to the QEH and the new medical addiction campus would appear viable and suitable for these services. In closing, Mr. Mayor, I can't stress enough the fear and unrest expressed by the residents in this area. Please consider their concerns while you debate your decisions tonight, and based on all the information and concerns that I've received from the residents in the affected area and representing their voices here tonight, I respectfully will not support the motion in front of us this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship. As most of us here have been contacted by many residents with their concerns in keeping the outreach centre where it is or moving it to Park Street, it's kind of left me kind of on which way to go. But since the province placed the centre at the Curling Club a couple of years ago, it's been nothing but controversy, problems, vandalism, violence, illegal drug use, police attendin' multiple times a day, thefts at residence, disruption of people's lives. We don't have an answer of how to change what's going on, other than to move it to another location. So we move it to the Park Street area. Do we think the issues are going to disappear? No. The police, that the police are not going to be called there regularly? There have also, they have already been incidents with residents in that area from the temporary housing location, thefts, trespassing, threats of violence, illegal drug use, needles discarded improperly. The province placed the outreach centre on Houston Street without any public consultation, and now they want council to ultimately approve a variance to allow them to move this to Park Street, again with no public consultation. I believe that the adventure group and its programs are a great resource to vulnerable people, however, it should be run separately from the outreach centre itself. Putting people in a location where they are tempted to get help, sorry, puts them into a spot where there is temptations, making it difficult for them. I don't want to see the adventure group shut down, nor the outreach centre shut down, but where do we put it? The vulnerable and homeless people, they need help. They need the services provided by these organizations. The province has come up with a better plan, rather than taking the easy way out and amalgamating these services at the gate, has to come out with a better plan, sorry, rather than taking the easy way out, amalgamating these services at the gateway to the city. I've heard the province will be looking to have this as a permanent location for the outreach centre down the road, not just a 12-month period. We haven't seen this, that, otherwise. We saw recently that the province failed to complete their obligations when the permit was approved for a temporary shelter, and they only completed them when they were requesting an extension. I would like to see what the province has planned for the future of the outreach centre. There's many unanswered questions. It doesn't answer, it doesn't matter where it's placed, these problems are not going to disappear, but they can be more manageable by not bunching these services all in one area. We cannot continue to have residents living in fear in their homes, walking on the sidewalk, attempting to enjoy one of the parks without finding needles. Students walk into school, needles in playgrounds, et cetera. So there needs to be a solution to this problem to protect the citizens in Charlottetown. So let's see what happens in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Bernard and Councillor McCabe.
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, I'm just going to read a little bit from the minutes that were in our package. Just a paragraph here I want to start off with. Post-pandemic has seen significant escalations in mental health, addiction, and homelessness at the national level. The introduction of drugs such as opioids, crystal meth have led to erratic behaviours that haven't been seen before, and this is concerning all across Canada. On top of this situation, PEI has seen an increase in population, four out of the last five years, which hasn't been experienced in decades. So it's... So it's not going to go away. It's going to continue and probably get worse. So right now, the model, the current model of the Outreach Center in Fitzroy Street has not worked. We all know that. There's been many mistakes made. The location is tucked in around, is surrounded by residential properties, near schools with few controls. So it provided for unworkable, and it was fearful for many. But I believe, Your Worship, the government has now recognized the poor decisions that were made, mistakes that were made in dealing with the Outreach Center, and they're looking to make improvements. For me, the hiring of an expert in this field of homelessness, mental health, and addictions with 30 years of experience and success in Calgary is a proper first step. I think we all agree the Outreach Center in Fitzroy Street needs to move from this location for many reasons. But I also believe the services are still needed and can be approved upon. And I'm just going to read a sentence, Your Worship, from this, the Carleen Donnelly that they hired as the expert here. She ran an established and successful facility in Calgary where she developed a care plan that offers mental health, addiction services, primary care, and skill development, all designed to not only address social, physical, and mental issues, but to help them learn skills and develop employment or readiness abilities. I think something has to be done, and I think they recognize that, and I think they're looking to make improvements. The Outreach Center was a disaster, no question. I think this is like a reset and win and do it right. They've got an expert now that's consulting for them. So I'm okay with approving the temporary variance for one year only with the proper fencing, the adequate policing of six officers to monitor the areas concerned 24/7, to make sure the locations work out to be safe for everyone. And if it does not work out, then I'm prepared to reject an application to make it a full-time location. So thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Counselor McCabe.
Thank you, Your Worship. I do have a question. I just need a clarification. During our planning board meeting, the province indicated that they were in discussions for proceeding to move towards permanent land changes. I guess, have these discussions started happening already?
Is that, Deputy, is it already that we, do you want to answer, or do you want to just direct it deferred? Okay. Laurel, can you answer that, please?
Yes, Your Worship. We have, the province has indicated to us their interest to locate it permanently. However, we have not received any applications, and we have had meetings with them over the past few months, and we have indicated that there is a number of challenges that they would have to overcome to be able to locate it there permanently. And from the staff level, we are not sure if that would be possible to be able to overcome those issues.
Thank you, Laurel. And I guess that brings me to kind of where my decision tonight is lying. I've thought long and hard. I don't think there's a real win in this decision. I know we've all struggled for a long time with trying to get to this point tonight. I feel, though, this is more of a reactionary move versus a well-thought-out, planned move. I know we're looking at land use today, but that does incorporate community impact. Unfortunately, I don't have a clear picture of that, as there has been no public consultation as we know. They have 20 letters of opposition and two letters of neutral. There's not a lot of cheerleaders in the corner. On the positive points in the planning report, when I read it, you know, planning staff is approving a temporary use for a year, but I'm not so confident we'd be seeing the same recommendation for permanent use, and I think we just heard that again. So to spend money to disrupt another neighborhood after five moves, I think it's time the province really takes some action and decide what this is going to look like, tighten up their operations and gain some public confidence. We know that there's a need, for sure, but we keep flopping it around without any change in how it's operating. For me, I'm struggling with that because I'm not going to be supporting staff's recommendation to change the location for the Outreach Center. I do have to get up to speak to my reasons why, and I feel I don't have enough clear information to support this use, and I don't think enough proper planning's gone into this. So for that reason, I will not be supporting staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I too have been struggling with this since this came in our place. So a couple of things I'm really annoyed with is how the province threw it back in our lap, and I know it's only a variance, but at the same time, if you vote yes, you're going to wear it. If you vote no, you're going to wear it. And at the same, and we all know that the Houston Street does not work. It's been a total disaster. I have people who I know and family members that live on Park Street, and I have family who's in the harness racing business that I've been hearing about for the last little bit, a little bit. One horseman said he went into his barn one day and there was a needle on the floor. If the harness racing committee goes in and sees that needle, like, he's not going to blame anyone but the horseman, so he could end up losing his license. And to that, and they're always in the barns and things along that line, and it's just, we bring in millions of dollars a year with the harness racing, and so for that, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Counselor Drong.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I don't know where to start. I wrote a few things down. I certainly agree with Counselor McKinnon, Ramsey. Counselor Matar was very eloquent in his speech, but at the end of the day, you know, we, when we're elected as city councillors, our concern is to represent the people that put their trust in us, to represent them, to do their wishes to the best of our ability, and to be their voice when issues come before this council, and to vote with their well-being at the forefront of our decisions. I've been asked many, many times to try and fix the problems that our community is facing and why we, as a council, are not doing more to protect our citizens. I was very upset to read in the paper this week where it was stated by a minister, "I know it is very distressing for residents to live in a community where you feel unsafe or uncomfortable, but getting rid of the services at the Outreach Center would only make the situation worse." Now, I didn't see the minister at Birchwood when the people pled their case where there was very sincere, very sincere issues at hand where people were breaking into their houses, stealing their stuff, you know? I really wonder if the current government understands the fear that residents feel every night when they go to bed. Will someone be breaking into our home tonight? Will someone be hurt? Will somebody be even killed? Will a robbery occur? Will any number of serious life-changing actions take place? These are the very thoughts that many people have when they go to bed each and every night living around the Outreach Center. I understand fully. We have an apartment. People are terrified. People have broken into the apartment, stolen stuff. I've seen needles in our basement. We have to lock everything up, which we never had to do before. This government has kept this place going for the last number of years and has failed the citizens of this city miserably. I cannot support this move to another location as doing the same thing continuously over and over and hoping for a different outcome shows no thought for the people and their families that will be affected by this move. I urge the government to sit back, rethink what they're doing, to shut the Outreach Center down, and to really do what the citizens want you to do, and that's protect their best interests. And that's why I can't support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Twill.
The last three years, it's been extremely difficult. It's been horrifying, tremendous amount of anxiety for the people that have lived around the Outreach Center. You've heard me consistently over the last year, last year and a half, even longer, I've said the same things over and over and over again. But you look at the Outreach Center today and why it was placed there, for the government to even admit, well, it doesn't work, is not good enough because they were told in no uncertain terms not to put the Outreach Center in between two city schools and into a community that's high-profile, senior citizens complex, small houses in Olivera Street, Alexander Drive, Upper Hillsboro Street, Houston Street, Hillsboro Street, all and through that entire community. So what's the result? Well, unprecedented, unprecedented amount of crime, break-in enters, stabbings, fights, assaults, intimidation. The neighborhood was under-sieged. A constituent of mine made, two years ago, made a presentation to one of the standing committees in the legislature. To no avail. Then recently, we made a presentation to the Standing Committee where concerned residents and myself get up and spoke to the consequences of the Outreach Center. So the question becomes, if it's this bad in this community, why would you actually think it's going to be any better moving it just a few blocks down to Park Street and Beach Street? You know, there is no trust, there's no credibility, there's no faith, no support. Whether you live in Beach Street, whether you live in Park Street, Kensington Road, Edward Street, Escher Street, Belmont Street, there's no support for this. What I've talked to residents over the last number of years, or the last number of months, they want the facility shut down. There needs to be a reset. If government truly wants to be by, for, and with the people, then do a reset. Shut it down. You heard a presentation here at Planning Board. Johnny McDonald spoke, and he talked about services already existing and other venues and other facilities around the city. I thought his presentation was fantastic, and he gave all those examples. Why is there a duplication? To my mind, that's just a justification to continue to fund an NGO that has lost the complete confidence of the community. We need to send an unequivocal, undeniable message to this province, this provincial government. We look after the city of Charlottetown, and if you want to come in with facilities and programs and policies, then you need to speak to the community and stop hiding behind city council. Enough is enough. I will definitely be voting against this, and the community that I represent wants the Outreach Center shut down immediately.
Thank you, Counselor Twill. Counselor Beck.
I think we're, it's been widely acknowledged and recognized that the Outreach Center has not worked where it is. It's also been acknowledged and publicly stated that the services will remain for the Outreach Center regardless of where they may be, and the city, the province, does have a right to conduct those businesses in its current environment. And as far as options, I don't think there's any really guarantees with any option that we would put forth here tonight. I'm like Counselor Bernard. I see this as an opportunity for a reset. I'm hearing the words "reset." I'm hearing the words "look at things," "doing things a little bit differently." We are looking at, the province is looking at bringing in Carleen Donnelly to come in, a person who has 30-plus years of experience working with thousands of vulnerable people right across this country. And there already have been some changes that have been implemented, and moving it down to Park Street would provide the opportunity to look at delivering the services in a different, more of a transactional manner to allow for inflow, to allow for control of how people are moving and what the service, what the center is actually being used for. And again, I reiterate, it has not worked where it currently is. This is an opportunity to do it differently. I do want to read something that Carleen Donnelly did state in her letter in reference to the reset. "It's an opportunity with the relocation of the Outreach Center to redefine and tighten the mandate and purpose of the center, address current intake issues, and identify gaps in access and navigation to external resources. It will take the commitment of the municipal and the provincial government and invested members of the community to come together and redesign the center and build new pathways." We often talk here about how we need various levels of government to work together, housing fund, whatever it might be. This is a situation where I think we have to work with the provincial government to try and work to come up with a solution that works better. The one thing is about this motion is it is time-bound. There's one year. There's been talk about what are we going to do about the homeless situation? What are we going to do about the various societal issues that are facing our community? Well, the spotlight's squarely on the province. They've got 12 months to come up with a plan, to come back and look at what is going to look differently. This will provide us an opportunity to see what those different services can look like under a different format and see if there are some changes that can be made to try and address what is a very complex, difficult situation to resolve. So for those reasons, I'm going to be supporting the motion to move it to Park Street, and clearly, again, I'll reiterate, it's a one-year purpose and one-year time limit and for that duration, so I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Beck. Deputy Mary Jacob and Counsel Drong.
Your Worship and fellow councillors, I rise to speak in relation to this resolution, which would allow the applicant, the Government of Prince Edward Island, Department of Housing, Land and Communities, a temporary one-year variance to permit two modular units to be placed at 15 Park Street, which is the former government garage, in order to relocate the provincial Outreach Center, which is currently being operated on Houston Street in the old Curling Club building. I am aware of many things, and one of those things is the Charlottetown residents are concerned that the provincial Outreach Center should be closed and its services reallocated to the provincial departments or agencies that would have otherwise addressed these issues at hand. Residents are asking for a complete reset and a comprehensive review of the unhoused and substance misuse crisis in our province. I've also heard folks asking for public consultation from the Government of Prince Edward Island. Residents are concerned about increased crime within surrounding neighborhoods, property values are being negatively affected, and the enjoyment of their property is being affected, and the concern that public safety will continue to diminish within these neighborhoods. There is also a great concern amongst residents that a centralized model of service delivery within the city will have a significant impact on the community in the area of influence. Further, there is a concern that the model will also do a disservice to the clients with differing needs, those that are in the active recovery intermingling with those who are in the grasp of addiction. There are still no reported findings in regard to the environmental assessment on Park Street property. However, the applicant, the Government of Prince Edward Island, has indicated that the mobile units in the suggested area will not be an issue. There are still many unanswered questions around how this move to Park Street would affect the Eastern Gateway Master Plan that was approved by the City of Charlottetown, the Government of Prince Edward Island, and CADC over 12 years ago, and is currently completing Phase One. It was also made clear by the applicant at the recent planning board meeting that they do not have a Plan B, and that if the temporary major variance is not approved, then this service will remain in its current location on Houston Street between two schools and seniors' housing. They have also made it clear that the Government of Prince Edward Island, Department of Housing They have also made it clear that the Government of Prince Edward Island, Department of Housing, Land and Communities will not be closing the Outreach Center. The Government of PEI has indicated their willingness to collaborate with residents, stakeholders, and other levels of government as they work towards a long-term plan. If this temporary major variance is approved and the Outreach Center relocates temporarily to Park Street, it has been confirmed by the Department of Housing, Land and Communities during the recent Planning Board meeting on January 16th that the facility would be operating substance-free, no drugs or alcohol would be permitted on the property. It is important to make it clear, this application is for one year and one year only. Government of Prince Edward Island, please do not look at this with a sigh of relief. This is only another Band-Aid solution, and you have mere months to figure out a long-term plan and vision to address long-term service delivery and the community impacts that go with it. But we are here to help. But my only hope is that this application request does not turn into just another complete boondoggle. Being in government, unfortunately, often involves making the least worst decision. The current situation and the proposed relocation are both highly problematic, but decisions have to be made on this very important issue. And if required to choose between these two less-than-desirable options, as counsel is being asked to do this evening, I reluctantly conclude that the temporary relocation is the least worst decision, and therefore, I will be supporting Planning Inherited Staff and Planning Board recommendation to approve this temporary one-year variance, therefore voting in favor of this resolution.
Thank you. Deputy.
Your Worship appointed order, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thanks. So I just want to remind everyone who's in attendance tonight that we do have under procedural bylaw conduct during public meetings of council. So 37-1, all persons in the public gallery at a council meeting will maintain quiet and order, B. And C, refrain from disturbing the proceedings by words, gestures, or actions, including applauding, displaying flags, placards, or similar material. Thank you.
Counsel Dron, two minutes.
I thought I got three.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Clock's going.
You know, we're sitting here tonight, and we're debating two options, keep it here, go there. I'd like to throw another third option in. Maybe we could sit down with the federal government, the provincial government, and the municipal government. We have a nice brightened compound out there. You know, a former minister and I were talking the other night, and he said, well, it's gated around there, we could get an agreement, you know, our housing ministers from that area, and our respected councillors from that area too. He supports moving this to another area. We could try it there for maybe a year. That would give them lots of fresh air and nice walkway around Victoria Park. It would, you know, that could always help. Like, I'm always here for suggestions. So, I mean, that would be something I could put on the floor for, you know, anything in the future, or we go back to the government, and they could look at that option. You know, we could work together, collaborative approach, you know, and that way we could separate it. When you see the fear, I went to every public discussion that was held on this, and the fear in people's faces, and they come to me and start crying, you know, until you feel that, you sit here and you say, well, let's move it down there. Let's try it down there. There's residents that live in that area, they've come to my house, they've phoned me, I've seen them. The fear in their faces, when you look at them, I experienced that this summer. There was drugs around our home in the park, there was needles around. My neighbors were upset, they're banging on my door. You know, until you feel that, you will never understand what these people are going through. When you go around the Outreach Center, and there's double, triple bolted locks on their doors, their sheds are locked, you can't understand that. You won't feel that until it happens to you. So when we sit here tonight and say, let's shove it down the road, try it again, I beg of you not to do that. Why, if you keep doing things over and over, the same thing, hoping that something's going to change, it won't. Believe me. You know, you have the opportunity, the government has the opportunity to fix what is now the Outreach Center, and they didn't do it. This is just smoke and mirrors, maybe to get through another election, maybe I shouldn't say that. But this is, you have the opportunity to fix this, and you won't fix it. And just saying we'll move it affect a different group of people? I just sit here and ask this council not to put that pressure on those people. You know, fix the problem, shut it down, do a reset, fix it. Don't move it down and affect more people. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dron. Counsel Twill.
Thank you. You know, the presentation, again, representing the provincial government, when the question was asked, you know, was there a Plan B? And the gentleman representing the province said, no, if it doesn't go to Park Street, it's going to stay in Houston Street. That's not his call. Last time I checked, he wasn't elected. I think that's up to the premier and the cabinet ministers. And we collectively, as a city council, send a strong message to the province collectively. If it's not going to Park Street, and we want it shut down, I think the province would listen. Later on, I've got a resolution coming here asking council to support, requesting the premier and three cabinet ministers to host a meeting at Birchwood to listen to what the people have to say. So for us to lend credence to, you know, a bureaucrat that works in a particular department, and it's not up to him, that's not his call, that's up to the elected officials. That's who makes the decisions. And, you know, Counsel Dron, I think you spoke very passionately, all the meetings that I've attended as well, the rallies that we held, you know, these are lifelong residents. They're paying taxes. Why not represent the taxpayers for a change? Why not represent the people that are walking their kids to school for a change? Not having to worry about needles and crack pipes and running into people, intimidating them. Why don't we represent them for a change? Okay? Why don't they become the priority? Neighborhoods and communities should become the priority. We should be striving for crime-free, drug-free, not worrying about needles on our sports fields, playgrounds, heritage squares, so that people can live in peace. And you're right, Counsel Batard. Yeah, I've seen the houses that are for sale, and I've talked to some of the residents down at Park Street and Beach Street, and there's more houses going up for sale. So between Houston Street down to Park Street, I said here back a few months ago, what, 25 properties for sale? What's going on here? What in the name of God is going on here? Let's start putting neighborhoods and communities first. Let's try that and see how it works.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. Counsel McLeire.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Anyway, with a lot of trepidation that I got up to speak to this request, the time is up, I believe, for action on this emotionally-charged issue. I think it's time for the province, the jig's up in time. You know, the way I look at this, you know, they've got a year, they've been struggling and working with this for a long time now. But as it relates to this, I'm prepared to give, and I know with the residents in the immediate area and the area of influence, asking them to give this thing another year, let's see what the province is really going to do with their long-term plan. I support the staff's recommendation. I think there's conditions in the recommendations that in a year's time, I know personally, I'll be certainly looking at it with a different lens. There's some major things that the province have to do to meet a continued, any kind of a long-term use or solution for this use of the future Outreach Center or whatever it may be called. The other thing that doesn't escape me, and I don't think should escape council on this, and I'm trying to look at it through the lens of the lane we're in as municipal officials, this is a zoning request, it's a planning request. And I know there's a whole lot of health issues and major issues around it that I'm not qualified and I'm not skilled in, but I know the province is a higher level of government than we are as a municipality. I feel they are making some efforts to work with it, they have come to the table on some things, I guess as it relates to some of the pieces down here with infrastructure and money and funding. However, I just feeling not to cooperate with them on this in another 12-month window. They do hold a card that, you know, maybe they can do, create some kind of emergency decree or do an I.RAC appeal. I mean, it has been supported by planning. I don't think that should escape us. So for a lot of those reasons, and in the short term, the location where it's at, it's probably maybe not the perfect location for the next 12 months down at the Park Street location. However, I do feel it will take some, makes a little more sense in the short term compared to where it is now. And I listened to, I've gone to all the meetings, attended the sessions, listened to the planning meeting on January 16th, and the, you know, the current location, located near schools, residential apartment complexes, high-visibility traffic area, located at a lighted intersection, lack of adequate parking, not accessible, ability to control the flow of traffic in and off the city. So I just feel that the time is up, the province have to come up with a long-term plan, the clock's ticking, they have 12 months to do it, and I'm prepared to support it in faith that they may come to the table. Because part of what they've got, what they have to go through, there's a whole public engagement thing, Eastern Gateway, there's a whole lot of things that got to be looked at. So they've got a big challenge, and we'll see what happens in years' time if this thing happens to pass this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McLeire. Okay. Question? Question's called? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution, please raise your hand. So it's Counselors Beck, McKinnon, Deputy Mayor Yankoff, Counsel Bernard, and Counsel McLeire, all those against. Counselors Twill, McCabe, Dron, Ramsey, and Matard. So it's a tie. And I would like to conclude by just going back to some of the comments that were made. I know that Laura Palmer Thompson did give us some of the issues that would have to be changed in the official plan under healthcare initiatives and also the Eastern Gateway plan. It also talked about the shortcomings, positives, neutral shortcomings, and the positives did show that this area was the least impacted. But I want to go to what makes Canadians sick, and that was presented by Carleen Donnelly, and where she talked about what makes Canadians sick. It talks about social exclusion, social lack of social safety net, housing and homelessness, which is a large issue, and this is underlying all of these other issues, and community belongings. And then I look at the email that I received from Susie Dillon regarding the outcomes from the Standing Committee on Housing and Social Development, the recommendations, there was three of the recommendations in regards to the provincial community Outreach Center, and they made it very clear that this center just could not close. Maybe not the location is correct, but it could not close. And I see this as an evolutionary process. It's a temporary variance. That's what it is. It's one year, 12 months, 365 days. And if I could end by quoting, "Nothing is more important than empathy for another human being's suffering. We have to feel for one another if we're going to survive with dignity." So I will be supporting the resolution, therefore, it's a six to five. Okay. Do you wish to go to the next agenda item? Starting with RFQ award, is that right? B.
Thank you, Your Worship. Water and Sewer Utility Resolution Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counsel Dron, seconded by Counsel Matard. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown proceeds with their procurement of one and three-quarter ton double cab four-by-four truck with eight-foot-long box, and accepts the bid submitted by Fair Isle Ford in the amount of $63,999 plus applicable taxes. And further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, 10-0. Okay, excellent.
Water and Sewer Utility Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counsel Dron, seconded by Counsel Matard. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown proceeds with the award of Charlottetown Pollution Control Plant Chemicals, and accepts the bid submitted by SNF Canada in the amount of $147,654.60 plus applicable taxes. And further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question's called. All those in favor? Okay.
Water and Sewer Utility Committee Resolution Number Three, moved by Counsel Dron, seconded by Counsel Matard. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown issue an expression of interest for an independent third-party review of the Miltonvale Wellfield Development Phase 3B Communication System
Question? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The vote was taken. Go ahead.
To the chair, to the manager, could you please elaborate on this review? I'd like to get, with all due respect, I'd like to get a better understanding.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. The mayor had put in this motion, he presented it to the committee, so then it went to the manager, and, you know, it's a very detailed presentation, it's a two or three-page motion, so I don't know if the manager has it today, but I'm sure he can send it to all of us to see exactly what we're getting into here, or maybe he can address it a little better than I can. So Manager McKeown, if you could, address this question, that'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. McKeown.
I believe the report is in your package and outlines the details for the expression
Counsel Twill.
Yeah.
The vote was taken. It's 10-0.
No, I put my hand up before the vote. Counselor Beck recognized that.
Well, okay, anyways, go ahead. Second question.
So what I'm trying to understand is, you know, we're talking about a third-party review, and I'm trying to understand that. But was there not a third party involved with the review of the contract? Like, was this fended through the committee? And what was the impact, in fact, of the third party with respect to the contract? And was the wording of the contract changed?
Mr. McKeown. Mr. McKeown.
Okay. Go ahead, sir. Yeah. I, I never seen the contract. They, we've been told they've been working on it. I don't know about a third party being hired or anything like that. Our committee hasn't, hasn't seen that. So, you know, I guess we'll ship it on down to Mr. McKeown to see if he can answer it. Thank you.
Keown.
So the contract is under review and the details of a contract is not something that we would discuss in an open forum?
Thank you. Do we have another resolution?
Do we have, did we vote?
We voted. Ten zero. Yeah, your hand was up. Ten zero. Okay. Another one?
That's, that's it for that.
Okay. So now we go to the three strategic priorities, communications, intergovernmental cooperation resolutions. So can you read the first resolution? CAO Eleanor? Or?
Should I speak to it?
Should we not put the resolution on the floor first, then speak to it? That, that's what we?
I think I'd like to provide a bit of context.
Okay. Go ahead.
If that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to provide a bit of context for where we are, how we got to these motions tonight. So at a previous meeting, Councilor Twill made the notice of motion as per our procedural bylaw. And it was to go back to a committee which ended up at my committee, the Strategic Priorities Communication and Intergovernmental Collaboration Committee, for further discussion. So the notice of motion was made and we were, Councilor Twill was asked to provide a bit of a rationale for the report so that we could discuss, debate, whatever it might be. But we really didn't have anything to kind of go on. So in light of the fact that we didn't feel we had enough information as to the rationale for what the motion was, we didn't know whether we should be supporting or rejecting the motion. So during our discussions, the CAO recommended that we could bring the motion forward to council for discussion with no recommendations. So that's what we've done. So we've decided to bring the, the motion forward, but we don't have any recommendations from our council, which is unique, which is a bit unusual, I will admit, and something that does not normally happen. But we also felt that in fairness to process, and since Councilor Twill had initiated the notice of motion, we felt that it was important to bring the motions forward for discussion amongst the greater council so that we could, we could do that. So we, we don't really have a recommendation from the committee, but we also felt it was important that these, the motions that Councilor Twill did put forth, that we, we do. So where we're at right now, just one thing before I get to my next point. Can we update in the report, Eleanor, that, because it wasn't reflected anywhere in there that the committee had no recommendations for council? Can we reflect that for the public record? Maybe in the last box where it says committee recommendations, or we can put in there that the committee requested that to go on to council with no recommendations? Can we reflect that at a later time?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. So basically what we have to do then, with the motions that Councilor Twill has put forth, we'll, we'll need a mover and a seconder. And then we would vote on each individual motion as it's, as outlined here tonight. So that's kind of how we're, we are where we are. It's a little bit of an unusual circumstance, but we also, I also wanted to provide that just as a bit of context for our deliberations here this evening. Thank you.
Okay. CAO, could you read the first one? Well, we want to put the resolution on the floor. Yeah. Put the resolution on the floor. Okay. Read the resolution.
I can't ask questions on the minute?
Well, the, the resol-
The minute could be the stop.
Well, in the minutes, it doesn't have a recommendation.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, and thanks for the explanation, because I, I wondered why there was no recommendation coming from the committee. And to start sending resolutions to council with no recommendations means that the committee didn't do the due diligence, is what it really means. So the idea is when things go to the committee, you would flush out any of the questions, have the proper people given feedback that would have the information on it. Because that's one of the things I found about this one. I don't know if there was, and there may have been some advice given from the police department or the police chief. But it doesn't seem to me that there was any information, it was just basically went to the committee, they weren't really sure what was asked, so they kind of bounced it back here. But there's still no clear direction of what, what it is that is being asked for. Because, you know, the notice of motion put, put forward and the notice of motion just came here to the floor. So I think, you know, when it goes back to the committee, it's supposed to be flushed out, recommendations come back here. And if that means getting proper staff in to give the information, then so be it. So, you know, to me, if, if there's no recommendation here, then we really don't know what we're talking about. So I don't know how you go to vote on this. We don't have, we don't have the professional information to make a recommendation.
CAO Eleanor, do you want to address that?
Thank you, Your Worship. So there's two ways of looking at this. The committee did make a recommendation to send this through to council, and that is in itself the recommendation to get here. So that's how it makes the procedural bylaw. There's two ways to look at this. And we discussed this at committee. The committee said, okay, well, maybe we need a legal opinion on this. But the question is, do you want to spend money on a legal opinion if perhaps council isn't interested in pursuing these things? So the thought was to bring it to council. If council's interested in pursuing some of these motions, then you defer it, send it back to committee for maybe a legal opinion or more information that you're looking for. So that's kind of where we landed in the moment. It was kind of an unfortunate turn, turn of events. I know Councilor Twill did, did want to be there at the committee, but he, he was unwell, so was unable to attend that day. But we also wanted to respect the notice of motion, that we would get it back in a timely manner to council to be able to consider this as well. So that's kind of how we ended up here today.
So my, my question to you, Eleanor, would be, if we're going to vote on it, and we vote yes, then it doesn't really go back to the committee? Because we've already voted yes, and that's instructions for the resolution to do that. So, you know, I, I don't see how you can vote yes, say, go ahead and do that, what the resolution says. Then send it back to committee, and the committee may get legal opinion, they may not. Like, it'd be probably nice to have a legal opinion before we make a decision on it. Like, I just, for me, there's not near enough information here.
Okay.
CAO Eleanor.
Okay. So two things. One, tonight is the opportunity actually for Councilor Twill as the one who's moving this motion to be able to explain the rationale behind his motion. So he's going to provide some of that information behind this motion. But two, if you do need more information, you can, you can defer it, and you can send it back to committee. Or, an example, you've got another one here for a bylaw. Okay. Well, the motion would be to create a bylaw, but if we do that, there's many steps of that bylaw where it's going to have to come back through committee and get reviewed and all those different steps along the way. So it won't be like an ultimate decision. But if there was anything that was truly a showstopper, and you're like, I don't know if we have jurisdiction, if we can do this kind of stuff, then the recommendation would be to, from me, to defer it, send it back to committee, asking for the legal opinion, then bring it back up with the recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay. Council Ramsey.
Yes. With everything that's going on, like, I would like, like to defer this and send it back to the committee so we as council can get more information, like I'm the Council Bernard, like you're voting on something and you're trying to, you're trying to start a new bylaw, but at the same time, if you don't have all the, all the information. So I would like to send it back to council, or to, to the committee, sorry.
Okay. Deferal, do you have a seconder? Now, just one second. Deferal? Okay. So the deferral's on the res-
Point of order.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. That's why the resolution should have been read before we started discussing it. That's, that's what I was saying. Well, I know, but, but, but he's got a, he's proposed a deferral, but we don't have the resolution on the floor. So you can't defer it, just as Tracy said, unless we have a resolution on the floor. So put the resolution on the floor. No, we can't. There's three resolutions. Okay. Read the first one.
Thank you, Your Worship. Before I do, just a clarity. And once the resolution is read, you can make a motion to defer it and send it back. Strategic Priorities Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor Twill, seconded by Councilor Duran. Be it resolved that council requests the provincial government and respective government officials responsible for the Outreach Center, Premier Dennis King, Honorable Rob Lance, Honorable Mark McLean, and Honorable Lois Thompson, to host and attend a public meeting to be held at Birchwood Junior High School to discuss, collaborate, and answer questions from the broader community focusing on the Outreach Center.
Okay. So Council Twill, you can speak to the resolution.
The resolution is straightforward. As you know, for the last three months, I've been requesting the provincial government to host a meeting at Birchwood Junior High School to answer questions regarding the Outreach Center. If you look at all the correspondence from the residents leading up to the Planning Board meeting, residents are very frustrated with the lack of consultation with the province. They wanted to have those discussions, they wanted to have that collaboration, they wanted that information session to take place. So I think we as a council, it's just a straightforward recommendation to, to the provincial government, it's a request. It's not very complicated. We request the premier and those three respective cabinet ministers to host a public meeting at Birchwood Junior High School to answer questions regarding the Outreach Center. That's, that's pretty straightforward. There's, you know, there's, there's no smoking gun here. It's pretty straightforward. And, and I, I think we should take the residents' concerns and formalize that in making that request to the provincial government. Thank you.
Council Bernard.
Your Worship, in the package, it has, that's number three.
No, we changed the, one, two, three. Yeah.
Change the order of the three resolutions?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm talking about the first one.
Okay. Okay. So did you want to go with the deferral on-
Why, why would you switch the order of the resolutions?
He asked it when we approved the agenda. We approved the agenda with the changes.
To change the order of the resolutions?
Yes.
I just thought he wanted all three of them moved up.
Nope. One, two, three. Started with the first one.
Okay.
Are you moving to deferral?
I'm in.
Are you, are you moving to deferral?
Oh, not on that, no. No.
Okay. Council McKay.
And I, and I mean, I don't, maybe I'm just tired. Respective, like, haven't, they know that public consultation and, and information and stuff is being requested. I'm, I'm struggling with how, what, are we just sending a letter to say we request this?
That's it.
But, but we, but if they say no, then it's no?
They say no, they say no.
Really? We're going to do a resolution on this?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay. Council Ramsey.
Yes. I was just going to say the same thing, Council McKay, but, like, you can invite anybody to anything, but if all of a sudden they say no, well, then it's just dead in the water. Like, I, I don't understand the resolution really, why. I mean, we can have someone like your CAO and the mayor address a letter to them, but they can toss it out, or they can say, yeah, it's a great idea.
Okay. Thank you. Council, Council Beck.
I, I, I don't feel a need to support the motion. I think the issues have been addressed. The other thing is, is this is a temporary, everything that we're doing here is temporary. If there are anything of a more permanent nature, there would be public consultations that would be happening. And those opportunities would be allowed for anyone to express their concerns. So I don't, I don't know, I, I wouldn't be in support of the motion, but, so anyway, I, I'd be voting no.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah. Thank you. I mean, as a proponent of public consultation, I would love to see public consultation in this matter on everything we do. The public has the right to be part of things. But I'm just thinking that maybe a better collaborative approach with our government partners would be just, maybe just sending a letter saying, you know, the public requests is, I think they've heard it loud and clear this evening, that, you know, one of the, you know, biggest things we heard even from a planning board perspective was the lack of public consultation. And I can't help but think that the province has heard that loud and clear. And I think doing it in, in the manner of a, of a resolution, I just think that maybe a letter could be sent if, if that's what we're asking instead of a resolution. So I'm, I'm hesitant to support the actual resolution as, as it is. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you, Council Twill, for putting this forward. You know, when we attended all those meetings, you know, we, you requested, you know, the premier to come up numerous times. You know, I go back to the old election adage, we are here for the people, with the people. But why can't you come and face the people? You know, they have concerns, they have legitimate concerns, they want their MLAs, they want their premier, they want their minister, you know, to come and answer the questions how this continues to happen. You know, for the last three or four months, you've asked a question. I don't think you got a reply from the government. Maybe you have, but you haven't shared it with me. So when we give a resolution of this magnitude, it's just like our council is, you know, cordially inviting you to come meet with the people and explain your actions just like you should. When you go around asking someone for their vote, you know, now it's time that they want you to explain the reasons why. Why are the things going the way they're going? You know, I, I think it's a great opportunity, you know, as a sitting government, to take a couple hours out of your day, the people that were requested in the resolution, come meet with the people in a friendly environment, and I'm sure all of council would go. I, I know we, we all didn't go the last time, but maybe we could all go and work collaboratively with, with the provincial government. And then we could explain, you know, why the reasons are, what they are. So I think it's a great idea, you know, and I, I was certainly one to second your motion. I'd love to see the premier and, and the ministers come and have a meeting with the people and, and answer their concerns. That's pretty simple. Give an hour or two out of your day. Thank you.
Council Twill, second time.
Thank you, Council Duran. You know, it's, it's quite evident, the residents have requested consultation with the elected officials at the provincial, provincial level. It's all in the correspondence that we received. It's, again, why wouldn't we, if we're going to send a letter, I think a resolution would carry much more weight. And why would we be hesitant in making that request? You know, it's, it's time for the province to meet with the people directly and answer the questions. It's their facility, it's their policies, it's their programs. It's not city councils. And the residents have been asking, they've pleaded with them over and over and over again, why wouldn't we support a resolution? It's, it's, it's a very respectful request. Pass a resolution, letter signed by the mayor, sent down to the premier's office, host a meeting up at Birchwood. Makes sense to me. That's called opening up the lines of communications. It's called collaboration. I, I hear that word, collaboration, all the time. I hear about it, but I don't see it. So why don't we try to practice what we preach? And why not have the decision-makers that are making these decisions of this magnitude face the people directly? Why not? What, what, what are we, what are we, why would you even hesitate? Pretty simple request.
Council Matard.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think we heard here this evening from, you know, all or most, if not all, councilors regarding the lack of community consultation that has occurred around this particular topic. So, you know, I, I feel the spirit and intent of this resolution, you know, adds some validity to our request as a council, as a level of government wanting to have a request of another level of government to come in and have a discussion, a community engagement. And, and, you know, and if this doesn't pass, you know, I still request strongly that it still proceeds from the mayor's office on behalf of council to send that letter down there. But I think as Councilor Twill indicated, this, you know, has some weight behind it in the sense that it's a motion that's been passed, and it shows the seriousness of council wanting to proceed with those types of consultations, particularly on this matter that we're dealing with here tonight. Thank you.
And Council Matard, under the comms plan that was leaked in, in the House there, and just before the House closed, the Legislative Assembly- before the House closed, the Legislative Assembly, there was a discussion and an effort to put together a steering committee, a task force made up of the province, the city, and the stakeholders. And it's also in the package from the Planning Department under the official plan, that 4.7 healthcare initiatives, that has to be triggered, where it says, "Our goal is to work with public and private sector partners to explore the opportunities and costs presented by initiatives in healthcare development. Our objective is," and this is 4.7.1, "our objective is to strike a steering committee composed of officials from three levels of government, non-governmental organizations, et cetera." So that's there. That's going to be triggered from the decision that was made tonight. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and I understand that, but I think what is, the problem there is that's after the fact. The community has asked for public consultation prior to tonight's decision, where they interpreted that as being stakeholder meetings, community engagement, task force in and around the affected area, and none of that has occurred. That is all hinging on whether or not this permit would be approved this evening. So now, that is all going to happen after the fact.
Right.
So I'm not sure what that does for people to give their feedback prior to the decisions that were made here this evening.
Right. But you were here January 16th at the Planning Board meeting. I asked to table the variance, and our planner said, "You can't table it because you have to enact this. This has to be passed, or if it's defeated, nothing happens." But it has to be passed, and then these other triggers are activated. Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. I just think that if the residents in the area want to have a meeting, then they should get a hold of the MLAs and ask for the meeting. What we approved tonight was for a variance, and that variance would move the outreach down to Park Street. But I think that the residents need to ask their representatives on provincial body for a meeting, if they want to have a meeting. It's not up to us to go and tell them to have a meeting. I think it's up to their residents to ask them to have that meeting. And like Counsel Beck said, I mean, right now, it's already been approved to move it down to Park Street, so I'm not sure, unless the residents get a hold of their representatives and ask for that meeting.
Yeah. That relocation is only for one year, 12 months, 365 days. There's a number of boxes that have to be checked off, and if they're not, I think the Planning Department said, "Don't come back, it was in a year's time, because we're not going to deal with it." Counsel Twill, you've already expanded. So, question?
Questions called.
Questions called.
So, are we going?
This is the deferral. No, sorry. Straight up, straight down. Who's in favor of the resolution? Please raise your hand. Okay, so it's Counselors Twill, Counselors, Counselor Duran, Counselor Matar, those against. Okay, Counselors McCabe, Beck, McKinnon, Deputy Mayor Yankoff, Counselor Bernard, McLeir, and Ramsey. Okay, you want to read the second one?
Can I ask?
Oh, go ahead.
I did try to, and I know we had already voted. My recommendation would be to follow up with what Deputy Yankoff said. I don't think it hurts to write a letter to say that this has been the request of residents, but I just wanted to put that on public record. Carry on.
Much more weight. And just to follow up, Counsel Bernard said, you know, "The residents have requested from the province to meet with them, and the province completely ignores them and has ignored them, Counsel Bernard." So I just wanted to state that for the public record. They have asked. They have asked numerous times. Not their MLA, they want to meet with government because they had those questions, and the government has refused.
Resolution number two. Okay, no, just, let's.
Strategic Priorities: Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Twill, seconded by Counselor Duran. Be it resolved that council conduct an independent, impartial, comprehensive, and extensive outside investigation to determine who made the decision, who was directly responsible, condoned and supported the illegal drug usage, the sale of drugs on and near the premises of the Outreach Center.
Okay. Counsel Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thanks again, Counsel Twill, for this resolution to hit the floor. I know we discussed this at council numerous times. I was never given the direct answer about who allowed this. Was it the NGOs allowing this on their property? You know, if we had so many cameras there, why weren't they arrested? Was it the federal prosecutor that said, "Don't arrest people with low, I don't know, low amounts"? You know, this resolution will get to the bottom of this. Somebody had to say, "Allow them to use drugs on the property." We've seen pictures, we've seen it, I've seen it surrounding the property. You know, how does this happen? It's against the law. You know, you're breaking the law when you do this. You know, we have cameras all around the area. When I come down to a council meeting and they're doing crack pipes right out front, why aren't they arrested? You know, where is this coming from? You know, who allowed this stuff? You know, it's against the law. You know, I think if we enforce this, this would certainly stop a lot of this usage, and for the residents that see people doing needles on the street and they're arrested, you know, this would be a big step into stopping this. So thank you for putting this forward.
Thank you. Counsel Duran, Counsel Ramsey.
Yes, and we all agree, thank you, your worship, and we all agree with this, but is this in our lane, to do this? Or is this, because the building and the property and the programs are run by the province, it's another thing, like, do we just send a letter and ask what's going on? Or do we spend our taxpayers' money to have an independent person to go look at this? Because, I don't know, like, I think we need more information on this one, too, so I'm willing to defer that back to the strat.
You're asking to defer it?
Yeah. Yeah, like, it's all about more information, and there's no recommendations come through in the whole three of them, and I would like to have more information on it. And if it is our job to go and hire an independent to find out what's going on, great. I mean, then it's all stated for us right there, that, you know, we will spend this and do this and do this. So I will defer.
We need a second there. Okay. Deferral moved by Counsel Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Bernard. Now, it's just on the deferral. Counsel Twill.
It is in our lane. It is in our lane. It's happening here in the City of Charlestown, and whether it's a building or property that's owned by the province, or regardless who owns it, City of Charlestown is responsible to enforce the criminal code through the Charlestown Police Department. However, the police department was there when this was taking place. That's why I call for an independent, comprehensive review. This was discussed in the legislature. Minister said himself, "Well, it's an operational issue," paraphrasing, "it's an operational issue, but nonetheless, well, we found out, we reversed the policy." What policy? Who initiated this? Who allowed drug usage and the sale of drugs on that property and adjacent properties? This was taking place in a high-profile area, in between two city schools, next to a seniors' complex, across from a local business, all in college not far away. This was taking place, and nothing was done about it. That's the motivation behind the resolution. And I think we, as a council, have to ensure that the criminal code and illegal activities are dealt with, and dealt with in a very objective, fair, and independent manner. That's the motivation. I mean, why wouldn't we do this? If this was any other agency, or if this was someone from the private sector, it would be dealt with, so why wasn't this dealt with? Why were charges laid? Why was this allowed to happen?
Okay.
Again, I don't see a need for deferral. It's pretty straightforward. I mean, we have to send a message out to the community that we're serious about protecting neighborhoods and communities, because right now, we're not.
Okay.
We're really not.
That's your phone. Okay, Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. Your worship, I seconded because, I mean, a lot of the questions that Counsel Twill asked, that's why it'd be nice to have the proper people in the room to be able to answer, to make a recommendation on this resolution. I don't know if there was drugs sold or wasn't sold, this is the first I'm hearing of it. Not saying it was, not saying it wasn't, this is the first I'm hearing of illegal drugs or not following the criminal code. So it'd be nice to have the police chief to be able to answer some of these questions, see what the recommendation is. And, I mean, that doesn't mean you don't do it, it just, you know, based on the assessment, based on the recommendation, we still can. But that's why I'd like to defer it, go back to the proper committee, get some proper information.
And bring in the chief of police, investigation services. Yeah? Okay. Counsel Matar.
Thank you, your worship. To Counsel Twill, you know, I certainly, you know, support and understand where you're going here with this. I guess the only thing I'm a little bit struggling with is the how, how would this be done? How would this be implemented? What would it look like for us as a council to make it forward? I really would like to have more information on how we do that and come up with a plan to do so. I want to move that forward, but I want a plan of action and what we do here. If we leave here tonight and we agree to this, I don't know what it says, like, it just, "Council will do this," but is that us as a council or third party? Like, I feel like we just don't know, I don't know what the plan is, but I agree with what you're saying and what you want to do on this resolution, and that I can stand behind. I just need more information to understand what I'm standing behind to make it move forward. So I hope you can respect that, that that's from the perspective of just information-wise. But, you know, I want to move forward, I want to see the information. I want to see how we would do this. How would this unfold for us as council? That's my plea to them.
Thank you, Counsel Matar. Counsel Beck.
Yeah. Thank you for that, your worship. Yeah, I'm, I would be supportive of digging deeper into this, I guess, if you will, and I think part of my reticence here is, I'm just kind of looking at the wording, Counselor Twill, and maybe this might be something, a consideration, as if this goes forward, if the deferral goes forward, but it's saying that "conduct an independent, impartial investigation," but that Charlestown City Council conduct that investigation to see if the City of Charlestown was directly responsible, and that the investigation team be selected and recruited by Charlestown City Council to investigate the City of Charlestown. So, no, but that's what it's saying, and I'm not, I'm not saying that that's not what you're wanting, but I'm saying that this is the way it's worded. So I think, in light of questions, in light of some clarification that's needed, I think we do have to go back and bring this back to our committee. We can look at some of this how-tos, we can look at some of the procedural stuff, get a little bit of clarity around what it is that we exactly want to do in terms of approaching this matter. Not to squash it, not to say not do it, but to have a little bit more clarity, I think, would be the biggest purpose. Because right now, there's a lot, lack of clarity around that. So I would support the motion for deferral. I don't mind revisiting again at our, but I think there is some work that would have to be done in terms of getting that done. So I would support the motion for deferral.
You calling the question?
Excuse me?
You calling the question?
Oh, I think Counsel Twill wants to say something.
Okay. Counsel Twill, you want to speak before, I know.
Yeah, I can understand the need for more clarity. I appreciate that. But the wording was, the way I worded it was, "Council retain an outside agency." Council would do that. Council wouldn't do the investigation. Council would retain an outside agency. We would drop the terms of reference, and then, once the investigation's completed, it would report back to city council, directly to city council. And that's why I emphasized an independent, objective, fair, comprehensive investigation, so we can get to the bottom of, how did this happen in our city? How did this happen in the residential area? How did this happen in between two city schools? And it was so blatant, it was so transparent, and it was so open? That's what the residents want to know as well? I think we need to know that as well. How was this allowed to happen in our city? I don't really care who allowed this to happen, but I think they need to be taken to task. We have a job to represent our constituents and protect, protect the neighborhoods and the communities. So, Counsel Beck, I understand what you're saying. More clarity, and that's fine, I'm fine with that. But we need to, we need to embark upon that exercise.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. Counsel McLeir.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm just going back over some, whatever, conversation around the alleged use of what Counselor Twill may be referring to, was it the Outreach Center? Wasn't there a period of time, and I can't quote anyone on this, but wasn't there, what I understood anyway, to be going on in relation to the drug piece? There was a, there was a window of time there, I don't know, it might have been days, or a week, or 10 days, that there was a location, a dumpster site on the front of the Curran property, where, where I think even our local police may have recognized, and the people running the Outreach Center recognized, that there may have been this usage and sort of thing going on, and for a period of time, and that it was, I guess, somewhat, somewhat of a blind eye turned to it, or recognizing it was some sort of a, you know, a short-term containment issue, because in the absence of that, and you can't, you can't, you know, condone that, but if it had not been going on there, it would have been going on in neighborhoods or in someone's backyard. So I don't know if there's any truth to that or merit to that, but if there, if there was, I guess it would just be, I'm assuming, I'm not quoting, but I would assuming it would be in perhaps the vein of whatever, police or the Outreach people that, you know, trying to, trying to negotiate, or, I'm saying negotiate, but trying to make the best, best use of something in the short term until, as we know, the Outreach Center, we talked about it earlier tonight, has had some operation issues, and, you know, it's hopefully going to get a reset. However, if, and I don't know if Counselor Twill, if that's where a lot of the concern stems from in terms of, you know, in terms of the motivation on, you know, on the motion, but, anyway, I just.
Counsel McLeir, the deferral's going back to the Standing Committee for Strategic Priorities, Communications, Intergovernmental Cooperation. Question? Questions?
On the deferral.
Yes.
Your worship, if, can I just clarify something before you vote?
Yeah.
Please. The very nature of this resolution essentially puts administration in conflict in trying to make a recommendation to this committee. This is the situation that we find ourselves in. The second part, if you look in the report details, the terms of reference for the investigation is provided there, and it says it would consist of the following, and number two is, was the City of Charlestown directly or indirectly involved in the decision to allow for the proliferation of trafficking in drug usage on or near the premises of the Outreach Center? So what this resolution is asking for, for me to have the chief of police review this, it's being called a question of whether the chief of police was involved, essentially, is what's behind this resolution. So I want to be very clear, if you're deferring this back to the committee, administration is going to have a very tough time in terms of making recommendations. So this resolution before you tonight is, are you interested in having an independent investigation? Or you're not? Or, yes, we're deferring, we're interested in an independent investigation, but we need more information on what that would look like? And then that puts us in that difficult position of staff, administration, in terms of supporting, what should that look like? Because then we're outlining a plan to investigate ourselves. So that's the challenge of deferring that back to the committee again, because they won't be able to have the support from staff to give you any additional information that way.
Okay, so, CAO Eleanor, really what you're saying is either approve it or defeat it. That's what you're saying, correct? No deferral? defeat it. That's what you're saying, correct? No deferral? No, what she's saying, we're accusing her.
Thank you, worship. You can, you can vote on the deferral to defer it.
Yeah.
I'm just expressing, once you send it, send it back to committee, that'll be the situation that we're placed in.
Okay.
So, the committee itself may have to reach out to Cox and Palmer for a legal opinion or something to that extent, but to be asking the chief to come help or make recommendations to the committee would put us in a conflict based on what's behind this resolution.
Okay, so, the question's been called, okay? Question's been called, look guys, we can be, we're not following the order here, so, question's been called, all those in favor of the deferral, please raise your hand. Okay. Counselors Twill, McCabe, Beck, McKinnon, yes, deputy mayor, Yankoff, Bernard, counselors, McLeer, Ramsey, and McLeer, against the deferral, nine to one. Okay, deferral is nine to one, Counselor Dron against, okay? Okay, so, can you read the next one?
Can I just ask a question?
You can ask a question right now, if you want to, in between.
Worship.
Go ahead.
Eleanor, makes sense what you're saying, but I think the reason I'd like to go back, and one of the reasons I missed the police department, is because I think the chief already answered that question before, and I think there's an answer there. The committee can take his answer, he can leave, and the committee can make a decision what they want to do, but he had an answer for what's in that resolution about drugs and drug selling and so on. And I don't know if I'll.
Want to go ahead, CAO?
Thank you, worship. So, yeah, the definitely, the police have answered this question a number of times in those chambers, and we're happy to put that in writing to you for the committee, but in terms of our involvement in advising on what this process would look like, we won't be doing that. Thank you.
Counselor McCabe.
And I think it's important to point out, Counselor Twill, you've been the biggest advocate to say as counselors, we shouldn't be evaluating our own stuff after the BDO report and stuff came out. So, I think we do have to be careful, you know, what we are looking for at the end of the day. And I think that, to spend money on something that, I don't think we have an endless pot where we can just keep going and spending money on stuff, so.
It's going back to the standing committee, we know that.
Yeah, that's fine, I just wanted to make my points because I didn't.
Yeah, so, it's going back to, and you can come to the standing committee meeting, okay?
No, 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 I always been, no, I've always been voted on.
Place up there was illegal, okay? And it wasn't just behind a dumpster, Counselor McLeer, it was up and down the street, it was all over the property, it was so blatant, everyone could see it on a daily basis, and it was a disgrace. So, let's find out who allowed it. Everybody's seen it, so, so, so the minister said, we reverse the policy. Who created the policy? Who created the policy? Let's find out. The people have a right to know.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, um, resolution number three.
Thank you, worship.
Thank you.
Strategic priorities, communications, and intergovernmental cooperation. Resolution number three, moved by Counselor Twill, seconded by Counselor Dron, be resolved that the city of Charlestown establish a municipal bylaw to prohibit the distribution of drug paraphernalia.
Okay, Counselor Twill, mover of the resolution, go ahead, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
What I'm looking to accomplish here tonight is, for council to, one, let's give this over to legal to see what a proposed bylaw would look like, do a jurisdictional scan across the country to see how other municipalities are dealing with needles and drugs, for example, all over playgrounds, school grounds. I recently received a phone call 10 days ago from the vice principal of Birchwood Junior High School about, you know, the impact and effect of needles on, on school property, our sports fields, our heritage squares, people's backyards. I was contacted by a resident on Alexander Drive again about a week, week and a half ago. This is not the first time that has happened, needles in his backyard. A year and a half ago, his daughter's bike was stolen. This is happening. I talked to residents of Laphthorn Avenue, it's happened to them. And I met with a, met with a sports group, football group, you know, they have to send, they have to send their players, coaches, and administrators up and down the field to check to see if there's any needles. This is totally unacceptable, it's a health hazard. So, we need to put in place the parameters, we need to put in place the prerequisites, so this, this doesn't happen in our city. And I believe the time has come to request a meeting with the chief medical officer, Heather Morrison, to come in here and meet with city council, so we can have a discussion about, you know, the different types of methodologies, you know, harm reduction versus clinical treatment. Clinical treatment that, where you have doctors and people with medical expertise, the credentials and qualifications, has to best help people with addictions to get truly rehabilitated and integrate it back into the community. So, I'm looking at a, a three-pronged approach to, to this whole exercise. That's what I'm looking to accomplish here tonight, to further, to further request for more information, legal, jurisdictional scan across the country to see how other municipalities deal with this, and to meet with Heather Morrison.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McCabe, you're up there, Counselor McCabe, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I think we just have to be careful when you say to prohibit the distribution of drug paraphernalia in our, in our city. I don't think prohibiting a drug paraphernalia is going to be the answer to anything. Our job is to look after and protect all residents of our city, and Health Canada, I'm guessing, might have a few more expertise than probably some of us around what's needed in order to protect our residents. There's reasons these happen. I really think that maybe what we need to do is to look at, taking this back to collaborate with other people, to look at how to manage the waste issues associated, perhaps with the drug paraphernalia. I don't think to say that we are not going to allow distribution of clean needles for our addicts in the world is, is the right solution to this. I think, how can we manage what happens when they get the needles, so that maybe they're not dropped over? We need some more data. I did get information tonight from Public Works to say, where, around the outreach center and stuff, where they've hired people through the province to do cleanup and stuff, that that's been really effective. And they would say that they don't have as much cleanup. So, I think there's more information we have to gather from all the points, you know, when we say that there's needles everywhere, is there an issue with how people dispose of needles? Yes. And I think we can look at solutions and discussions around that. But I don't, I'm not ever going to be comfortable to say prohibit harm reduction methods when we have to look out for all residents.
Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, your worship, and I totally agree with Counselor McCabe's rationale there for prohibiting. And I'm not sure off the procedure of how this works, I'd like to put a notice of motion on the floor. I noticed in the agenda, there's no new business opportunity, and it's relating to this resolution. So, when, I'm asking, when can I put that notice of motion on the floor?
Does a notice of motion deal with this issue?
Yes.
Oh. CAO?
Well, he could raise it related to this issue.
So, does he bring it up under new business?
He could bring it up under this issue, depending on where you.
Okay, what's your notice of motion?
I would like to see a, a bylaw created banning, and the reason I'm bringing this forward, there's been a couple of municipalities in Canada recently passed a bylaw similar to this, is that banning all use of drugs, alcohol, the use of paraphernalia in all city parks and public spaces within the city of Charlestown.
It's your notice?
Yeah.
Eleanor, did, CAO, did you get that down? So, identify the appropriate committee to, standing committee to send it back to, and then follow up, okay? Counselor Beck.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Um, I think what, with regards to what is happening here with the distribution of clean needles and needle exchanges that have been going on, this has been around since the eighties. It's been a publicly, Public Health Agency of Canada approved, it's been approved by the CPO. The work that is being done, the reality is this, drug, illicit drug usage has taken root in Charlestown, abundantly clear. So, the question is, how do we deal most effectively with addiction? How do we not only support the addicts, but also, how do we work to protect the larger community? And there's not just an addiction issue here, there is a larger cost to public health, there's a larger protection of the public health as well, too. And to look at what the, take the native council, for example, we received a presentation from them, where they come in and they explain the work that they do in terms of taking the package of 10 needles, giving the 10 dirty needles back, giving 10 clean needles in exchange, right? Coming back in a secure case, the lock phone kits, again, Public Health Agency of Canada approved, chief public health officer, Prince Edward Island approved, directed to say these are harm reduction strategies. The reality is, our addicts are going to use, they're going to continue their addiction, because they are in the throes of addiction, unfortunately. So, whatever it means it takes, they're going to do it. I would prefer to see potentially cleaner noodles, sorry, noodles, needles, cleaner needles around our parks and our squares and our schools and everywhere else, which harm reduction strategies do. So, I am not, and I would concur with what Counselor McCabe said, there's a lot smarter people that have been looking at this, analyzing this, researching this for years. This is asking us to usurp the fine work that they've done and say, we think we have a better solution. I think that's dangerous. So, I would not support that. So, I would not, I, I think we have to, I think we have to continue to try to find our best solutions. I agree with trying to support them the best, lead them into addiction, and that's another thing that happens with this, too, is for a lot of these people, a lot of the addicts who are suffering from addiction, the relationships that are built, the care that they are given, the, trying to get them into addiction is part of the whole process. And so, it may seem on the outside that it's, it's, it's nonsensical in some ways, but in a lot of ways, it is, been shown over time, that we have to do what we can to, to support not only the addicts, but also to protect the larger community, and to support, reduce the cost of the overall medical system. So, I will not be supporting the motion.
Counselor Turek.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, you know, I'm certainly supportive of ensuring our citizens are supported and feel, you know, reducing any risk to our, to our citizens. How we do that is a challenge, you know, and it's certainly one that requires more information, education, tools, and I, I agree with Counselor Twill, and that, I was, you know, I was happy to hear that, that it, let's bring in the people, let's have some discussions, let's find out what other jurisdictions do. Thank you, Counselor McKinnon made a good suggestion there as well. And I think if we have to here tonight, vote on the motion as it stands and what it says, that would be difficult for me, because yet again, I think it's, it's all about information, and what we can have as a council to make better decisions on how we move forward to address this problem. And this problem is not going away, you know, the, the problem is going to exist, the needles are going to continue to be in our parks, our schools, our playgrounds, et cetera. We need to figure out how we address this in a way from public safety perspective, but also helping the community as a whole. So, I'm in favor of, again, going down a path, and trying to get more information, trying to be, be better educated from, you know, as you indicated, have Dr. Heather Morrison come in, other, other entities that know about harm reduction, provide council with good pathways forward, you know, and help us address kind of like the, you know, the where and the when and the how, you know, these supplies are distributed, and how we can address those. So, if we, I don't know if it's a deferral that we're looking to do, is deferring this back to the committee. Again, a lot of these need be getting deferred back to the committee, or are we just saying no to this, and then what are we doing to address it going forward? How do we, how do we keep the momentum going going forward?
Good points, Counselor Turek, great points. Counselor Bernard?
Actually, that was my question. I mean, from what I heard from Counselor Twill, he had a three-pronged approach, he wants to have a meeting, wants to, so, you want to flush out and get more information. So, are you withdrawing this resolution until we get more information? Because that's, that's what it looks like to me, we're.
Yeah, just one second. So, is that your question, or you have anything else?
Well, I mean, you, you can't eliminate harm reduction.
No.
You just can't, can't eliminate harm reduction. So, I think, but I got what he's asking for, he's hoping to get more information, so, which tells me you want to pull this off, or send it back to the committee, and they get more information that you're looking for, have that meeting.
Go ahead, Counselor Twill.
That's a good question. Ultimately, it could lead to a bylaw, that's what I'm striving for, if I want to go about it the right way. That's why I wanted to have the discussion with council, that was the motivation. You know, it's no secret that the city has been plagued with needles all over the city. And they suggest, you know, that, you know, it's gotten better. Well, that's not what I'm hearing from the community. So, I have to totally disagree with your assessment, Counselor McCabe, because that's not what the community's telling me. School administrators, school administrators, residents are continuing telling, telling me that needles are everywhere, and, and they're scared, they're fearful. They don't want their children around needles. It's, it's pretty straight. I'm, I guess what I'll, I guess what I'll do is, is I'll move a deferral, to send it back to the committee, right, with those three prerequisites, three prerequisites in mind, right? A, have our solicitors look at a proposed bylaw, what the legal ramifications would be. B, do a jurisdictional scan, thank Counselor McKinnon, you alluded to a couple of municipalities across the country, to look at what other municipalities are doing. And, third, okay, what is the best form of action in terms of helping people with addictions becoming rehabilitated and integrate it back into the community? And I think a reasonable response, responsible approach would be to invite the chief medical officer, Heather Morrison, to come in, come in and meet with council, right, to give these people the best, you know, the best that we can give them in terms of, you know, clinical treatment, and people that are professionals in the field.
Okay, so, Counselor, are you moving a deferral?
I'll move a deferral.
Okay, so, do I get a second of that deferral? Okay, Counselor Dron.
Yeah.
Deferral, want to go to the question? Want to go to the question? Question's called. Oh, I thought just, we could rush this up, but anyways, go ahead there, deputy.
Sorry, your worship.
No, 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 no.
Thank you. Just, um, finally, some heat, so.
Turn it up to a high.
I didn't. It's nice and cozy. All right, go ahead there, deputy.
I'm just waiting until the chatter is done.
Get a glass of water.
Yep. So, um, so I, I'm, I'm fine with the deferral, but I just want to make it clear that, you know, a deferral's fine, but I, I know that some level of harm reduction is necessary. I mean, the surge of bloodborne infectious diseases and the, and the strain on the healthcare system would be, you know, it would be just a, it would not be a good for this province or, or any, any other area in Canada. So, I'm good with the deferral, I love the idea of having Dr. Morrison come in and speak to us and, and educate us on this. This could even be an additional, um, um, education session for council as well. But, I mean, anyhow, I will, I will support the deferral, but harm reduction, I think, always has to be part of, of the solution. Thank you.
Okay. Did, okay, did you, okay. Okay, Counselor Beck.
I thought I was up next.
I think, I think that, I think that's the third time, is it not speaking to this?
Did I, did I speak?
Yeah. Thank, thank you very much.
No, I only, I didn't.
No, 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 question, question's called, question's called. Let's have the question.
This is to the deferral, correct?
Yeah, yes, you want to speak to the deferral, okay.
Yeah, I didn't speak to the deferral.
Okay.
So, for the deferral, I'll make it quick. If this comes back to my committee, I would like specific, clear instructions as to what we are looking at, because what the three-pronged approach might be, whatever that is. So, if we're coming back, we have to have something to, to one. And so, I would like to have a clear request of our committee, so when we come back, we say, this is what we want, this is what we're looking for, and then we can have a clear understanding for a path forward on this motion as to where we're going. Thank you.
No, and you can invite the Counselor, Counselor Twill to the, to your committee meeting.
Anyone can come.
Yeah, okay.
Counselor Twill included.
Okay.
Counselor Twill included.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Twill. Question's called? Okay, all those in favor of the deferral, please raise your hand. Okay, nine zero, and Counselor Bernard is missing. So that's that. Okay, so we have new business?
Thank you, your worship.
Maybe excuse for a sec.
Sure, you can, sir.
Oh, yep, sure. Moved by Counselor McLeer, seconded by Deputy Mayor Yankoff. Be it resolved, that effective immediately and as recommended by his worship, Mayor Philip Brown, Tazuo Riyadh be appointed to the Charlottetown Civic Management, Inc. Board of Directors.
Question's called. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero with Counselor, Counselors Bernard and Twill absent. Okay, now you do have a first reading to amend the procedural bylaw. Do you want to go with that? Do you want to speak to it first or how do you want to do this CAO Eleanor? Do you want to, do you want to speak? Do you want Counselor Beck to speak to it first? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. So again, just to provide a bit of context here, this motion or first reading did come at our meeting or two ago. I can't remember the, the exact date. And the request was to come back to our committee for a little bit further discussion on the points that were raised. So the, basically, the points that were covered were committee of the whole, moving our regular meetings from Monday, second and fourth Monday to second and fourth Tuesday, including educational sessions and including notice of motions, clarification, and also renaming the fourth Tuesday from a special meeting to a regular meeting. So those were kind of the areas of discussion that we were asked to look at. So as far as the committee of the whole, that decision, committee of the whole is now its own standing committee. So it really has nothing to do with the procedural bylaw. It will sit as its own, the recommendation is that it's set as its own committee with its own terms of reference and be included there to be used as needed only. In terms of moving from the second and fourth Monday to the second and fourth Tuesday, the committee was supportive of that and there were no issues with that. So we would recommend that that go forward. As far as the educational sessions are concerned, there was no problem on the committee with including those as well. Notice of motions were, there was no issues with that. However, I would like to recommend one change to the notice of motion. And if you have your package, it's actually kind of timely.
What, what page is it on digitally?
On the, it's under the, it's under, I have the paper copy here. Sorry, I don't have it on the.
Okay.
On page one hundred and four.
Hundred and four.
Page one hundred and four, if you want to turn to page one hundred and four. So it's under section forty-one point two. Where it says, a written copy of the notice of motion shall then be provided to the CAO. So what I would recommend that we insert there is a written copy of the notice of motion, along with the background rationale that supports said motion, shall then be provided to the CAO. So what that would do is it would allow us to avoid what we had tonight, where a committee was looking at something, did not really have the rationale or the background for it, to actually make a recommendation to bring to council. Because I think if we're going to be doing committee work, we might as well come forth with something, either supporting it or rejecting it. And I think that background rationale is important to have, be it through a written submission or an attendance in person or virtually at a meeting, however that may be, I think that background rationale is important to have. So we would like to have the notice, or I'm recommending, if it's okay, friendly amendment or whatever it might be, I'm not sure what the procedure might be. That we insert that clause under section forty-one point two. The question kind of came around the last one, changing the fourth Monday meeting from a special council meeting to a regular council meeting. And the committee felt that a couple of the concerns were, that were raised in the past were that if we change it to a regular council meeting, then we have to have it on the fourth Monday. We can, and it can't be canceled. All meetings can be canceled at any time, regular meeting, special council meeting, whatever it might be. So we, we, we talked about that and that's what we ended up agreeing to. The other thing was, there was a concern about if it's changed from a special council to a regular meeting, that it could affect the possible code of conduct violations with a counselor missing three meetings in a row, three council meetings in a row, or three committee meetings in a row, and that could affect possible code of conduct. But the way the code of conduct reads, I mean, attendance is not an issue with this council and has not been an issue with this council. And the other part is, so I don't, we don't see that as being an issue, but the other part is, is that if it does come to pass that a counselor does miss three meetings, they're kind of, they're, they're adjudicated, for lack of a better word, on their own individual circumstances. So someone may miss three meetings for legitimate reasons. We look at it and make an assessment. So we kind of felt that there, by changing it from a special to a regular, because the meetings have been regular, they are no longer special. And special meetings have, are to be conducted for exceptional reasons. Special, some circumstance comes up, the mayor has to call it at the last minute, it's a special meeting. When we're holding them regularly, like we have been holding them, second Monday and second and fourth Monday, they have been happening. So the committee recommendation is that we change the fourth Monday to a regular council meeting and all the other ones stay. We move to Tuesdays, we include educational sessions, we have the notice of motions and that we change it to a regular meeting. So that's council recommendation that we do and we would open it up, I guess, for people to discuss.
Yep. Counselor Bernard?
Thank you, thank you, your worship. I can't recall very many times when we've ever, ever canceled a regularly scheduled meeting.
Me too.
And I'm not sure, I'm still not clear why we need to change. If, if you look at eleven seven, which they like to stroke, strike out, and this is what I've talked about in here at different times, we made this amendment December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, so two years ago, because there were special meetings being sprinkled all through the month and it was hard to, to plan your life. So what counsel at the time said, well, let's book the fourth Monday of the month for special meetings. So anything that come up that couldn't wait for the regular scheduled meeting, any presentations that needed to be made, any tenders that, that the, were about to expire for the next council meeting, regular scheduled council meeting. So that was, that was why that was set up. So it seems that now from this, from this term, it just seems that every time there's a fourth Monday of the month, well, staff's got to try and get something ready. We got to throw, we got to throw something on there. We got to, we got to, there's another meeting scheduled. That was just held in the bayous in case we needed it. There's, you know, I, I go back to the January third meeting where nothing on that agenda. We couldn't wait till January eleventh. January, January eighth, I guess, was our council meeting. And we met on the third, passed a few things, and on the eighth, some committee said nothing to report because it was already passed that Friday, that, that fourth Monday. I'm not sure why we can't leave it in place where we, we have that scheduled, the fourth Monday, and if I change it to Tuesday, doesn't matter, fourth Tuesday of the month. So if something does come up, then the mayor calls a meeting. But to me, when you, when you, when you start setting regular scheduled meetings, then you want to have some things on the agenda and you want to be able to have your meeting because our regular scheduled meeting is when all the committees give a report. So to me, especially scheduled meeting, although we've been having them, hasn't needed to be. We could have been waiting for the, for the regular scheduled meeting to do our reports. But if something come up, what happened was, I think it got off track, is if something come up that was important and we needed to meet, the mayor will call a meeting and then while we're meeting, we might as well throw these resolutions on, these resolutions on, throw them on, then, and then it became, well, it's like a regular scheduled meeting now. We're going to meet the second and we're going to meet the fourth. So to me, to me, what's already in the, what's already in our, our procedural bylaw, leave it the way it is. Council still set, so, the, council still set a fixed day each month when a special meeting of council may be held, being the fourth Monday of every month, at a time to be determined, provided by, provided the procedure for the calling of a special meeting of council, and this bylaw is followed. A special meeting of council may be held on a day other than the day fixed here, then, provided the procedure for calling the special meeting of council, and this bylaw is followed. So I'm not sure why that can't be left alone because we have that date already set aside. And whether you want to call it a regular scheduled meeting or a special meeting, because my thing is going to be, you, you do is another scheduled meeting. The public will be expecting that that meeting goes ahead. It's a regular scheduled meeting. And then we're going to start having our special meetings sprinkled throughout the month and top of that. So that's, that's one question. So personally, I'd like to see that, that, that stay the way it is. I did have another question here.
Under the education meetings?
Yes, I did ask the minister.
Minister Lance?
Yes, Minister for Communities, I think Christine McKinnon.
Yep, yes, yes.
Anyway, members of council are allowed to meet for training and development activities. This is not a council meeting. No decisions are made and it's not chaired by the mayor. So this is what we brought up earlier this month when, when it was brought up that we were told, or at least I interpreted that, you, you had to change this for educational meetings or development meetings. No, you don't. And then she went on to say that some municipalities are thinking that, you know, you, you can't go out and have supper together. Well, you can't, you can't have a council meeting at a restaurant, and I think we knew that. But if council wants to go out together and have, have a meeting or have, have a meal, no problem. But I think, so she just let, she just put that in there because I think some municipalities in PEI are saying you can't even, can't even go out for supper. Yeah, you can't socialize with, with more decorum, which she said is not the case. So as we know, all our meetings are, are taped live and then we don't, we don't have meetings unless they're, unless they're live. All our community meetings, committee meetings are live. So anyway, the point being that, that we, you know, the education or development activities, you don't have to call it a regular scheduled meeting. That's, that's stuff that we're allowed to do. We're not making decisions, we're not making recommendations. So.
Thank you.
I still had one more, your worship.
Did you? Well, you can pick it up the, your second time. Counselor Ramsey's waiting there.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Ramsey?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Counselor Beck. Maybe I'm getting too old or what's going on or I've been here long enough, but it's, some of these proposals is just, seems like we're changing for the sake of changing. Like for over a hundred years, council met the second Monday of every month. And to me, I'm retired and I can meet on a Thursday or Wednesday or Sunday, whatever council is, that like, that's not a big thing. And at the same time, I was chair of that committee in twenty twenty-two, I believe, your worship, when you come in and we decided at that time and bring it to council on this fourth.
Fourth Monday.
Fourth Monday, yes, it was. Of that month, if there's something come up, we would use it. And I'm sort of like Counselor Bernard, too. Like I don't, there's only a word difference changed between regular and special meeting. And I don't hope we're not going to be buckled down by using it as a council meeting and then all of a sudden, if Joe Blow can't get here and something along that line, it just seems to be, some days, like when I was first got elected, there's a gentleman, a fine businessman in Charlottetown, he said, Kevin, now that you're elected, don't, for God's sake, don't call a meeting just for the sake of calling a meeting. And, and that's sort of stuck in my head since twenty fourteen, but, and I know every time we come here, it's something important, but your special meetings are, you're supposed to be your special meeting for the fourth Monday and why? And as I stated before, do you, Counselor Beck, for moving it from Monday to Tuesday are a regular council meeting? If you don't read your package from Friday to Sunday, I can't see Monday being an extra day if someone's going to say, God, I got to cramp all this stuff in. Now, now, that's just my personal opinion, but as I said, like, I'm willing to go to Tuesday on that, i- because it's not the end of the world for me. But, you know, there's times, you got to separate your work and your home life. And I just find, since I've been aboard, and, and the mayor's been aboard since twenty eighteen, I think one year I asked Tracy, I think we had a hundred and sixty-three meetings or something like that, like, like we got to have a life, too, outside this. And maybe I'm speaking outside the box with this, but this is not our lives. We all have families, we all have grandchildren, we all have kids and sports and stuff along that line. So, you know, we have to look after ourselves, too. We talk about mental health and personal health, but if you're sitting at home looking at your phone and you get three thousand emails or phone calls or, or going to meetings, like it's certainly not going to help everybody. And that's just my personal opinion. Thank you very much.
Counselor Ramsey, thank you for your personal opinion. Counselor Beck?
I'm going to defer to my colleague, Counselor McCabe, because he'd like to speak.
Well, listen, I, listen, I appreciate that. Counselor McCabe, you have the floor. You have the floor.
Can you take?
We're listening.
Make your answer.
Oh, yes, see? That's why we have to move you, too.
No, it wasn't. You know what?
Move you out into the gallery.
We're here and that people are feeling like it's really busy because it is. We've grown a whole lot. We've got a really big city and lots of things happening, great things happening, but we can't stay the same we did in like thirty years ago either. We do have to be progressive and look at how we can use our time the most efficiently so that your life can be lived. Because, you know, it's how do we take all this stuff and organize it better for everybody? For staff who have to come in here many, many nights and I'm sure they don't want to be. I enjoy your company, but don't need to see you as often as I do either. I would love to look at how we can restructure how we do our business. I, I don't want any committees. I think we should, right? And I love that next part where, you know what? Everything has to come here anyway, so by the time I hear it nine times and get here and here for the tenth, it's a little boring. So, you know, I think what we're trying to do is look at how can we do business better, more effectively with the important job we do have to do. And I think what they're trying to do is give us some suggestions to try. And as Counselor Beck has said numerous times, because you try something and it doesn't work, doesn't mean you can't go back. But maybe if you try something new, it might work better. So I'm all over doing whatever we have to do if it means that I can use my time more efficiently, more effectively, to have stuff in front of me and I don't have to spend four hours every time I'm here because we go on and on and on. I'd like to have it so that it's a little bit more good. There you go.
Okay. Well, just as a teacher, as you know, repetition is the key to learning. Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you, your worship. Gosh, Counselor McKay, that's a tough act to follow. So in terms of the changes to the procedural bylaw, I don't have any issue renaming this a regular meeting of council. When you look at the agendas over the last year, like here's a prime example of this evening. If we left this stuff for, for our regular monthly meeting of council, well, we'd be here until the wee hours of the morning. Yeah.
This is a special meeting and we are at it.
Yes. But, 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 but the special meeting and the regular meeting is certainly not a hill I will die on. I have no problem keeping them called that. But the other parts of the changes, I'm all for those. And as CAO Mohammed pointed out, when the act doesn't mention something and it's silent, it, it may or may not mean that you can't have these onboarding sessions and these educational sessions, as Counsel Bernard pointed out, and he did get that information from the minister's office. But why not just be extra, extra sure and put it into the procedural? We're not changing anything we're already doing. We're just, we're just. We're just putting it there so it's right out there, and it's transparent to the public that we are okay to have these educational sessions or meetings that don't make any decisions. And as for Monday to a Tuesday, the reason I think that Tuesday could work better is we've always been encouraged to read our package, and then we have many, many questions for clarification to staff. And if we have this extra day, maybe we're not having to stand up here and ask questions that could be clarified, that don't need to be asked in a public format, because they're just clarification questions. So the Tuesday's good. The changes to the notice of motion friendly amendment is good with me. But if council wants to skip the special meeting term and not call it a regular meeting, leave it a special, I'm fine with that. So that's, thank you.
Good point. Now, are you allowed to speak? Can you speak there?
I don't think I'm voting yet. I introduced the motion, but I didn't, no, I get a second time.
Yeah, it is your second time, yeah. We're counting, I'm checking them off.
Yeah. I agree with you wholeheartedly, deputy. I guess I'm wondering, two, are we, Counselor Bernard would like, and Counselor Ramsey, I think, would like to keep the special.
So do I.
Can we, can they propose an amendment, and we vote on that amendment?
Friendly amendment.
And then decide whether we want to, can we vote on that and put that to bed one way or another?
It's a friendly amendment. What?
Basically, we would recommend that we accept all the recommendations, except that we retain
Special meeting on the fourth.
Fourth Tuesday.
As a special meeting.
Would be a special meeting. So can we vote on that now?
Yeah, let's do that.
And then decide, and then we'll, and if we don't go call it a special meeting, it will be a regular.
Yeah, okay, so you're moving a friendly amendment.
Well, yeah, or sure.
Yep, so you're moving a friendly amendment, seconded by the deputy mayor.
So.
Friendly amendment is to change the fourth Tuesday, or leave the fourth Tuesday as a special meeting.
What's the section there, Counselor Bernard? Section 7. Something?
11.7.
11.7. So the motion is to leave section 11.7, as is?
Yeah.
As a special council meeting. Everything else, all the other recommendations that we put forth will remain.
Good, deputy.
And if we approve it, then it remains as a special meeting.
Yeah.
If we don't approve it, it converts to a regular meeting.
Okay, okay, so it's a special, friendly amendment moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, to leave the fourth Tuesday as a special meeting, correct?
Correct.
Question? Questions? All those in favor? Okay, all those in favor of the special amendment, of the special, sorry, the friendly amendment? Okay, I didn't see.
I moved.
Okay, I'm going to call again. All those in favor of the friendly amendment to leave the fourth Tuesday as a special meeting, please raise your hand. Okay, Counselor Twill, Counselor McCabe, Counselor Beck? Okay, Counselor Dran, yea? Counsel McKinnon, no. Deputy, yea. Counselor Bernard, yea? Counselor Bernard, yep. Counselor McLeir, Counselor Ramsey, and Counselor Matar. So it's eight to two. Okay, great. Did you take note of that? Eight to two in the friendly amendment? That's all right. Now, everything else is? Yeah, yeah. Okay, everything else good to go ahead? Counselor Bernard, did you, second time?
Yeah, I just wanted the clarification. I'm just curious. Eight, eight or eight, eight dash one. No member shall have power to direct or interfere with the performance of any work of the city, and no member shall instruct or give direction to an employee of the city. The new wording is basically the same, but I'm just wondering.
That's always been there.
What's the change, as in city corporation?
What's that? Just put your mic on there, sorry.
So the new one is no member shall have the power to direct or interfere with the performance of any work of the city corporation or administration. And no member shall instruct or give directions to an employee. So I guess the only change is, instead of city, is city corporation?
Go ahead, Counselor Matar, where to choose?
Is it or administrations, the other addition to it?
So was that needed? I guess what's, I'm kind of wondering what's the difference?
You got it there, Counselor Beck?
I'll follow further on that.
Oh, sure. CAO Eleanor Mohammed?
My apologies, I don't have the red line right in front of me. So the wording was changed from. It just gets a bit more specific, that's all. No member should have the power. Yeah, it's just more specific. So interfering with the corporation in general, but specifically with administration. The language isn't too much different than what you already actually have in your code of conduct as well, so just to simplify.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Beck, you ready to go with the first reading? Go to the first reading? Okay, all those in favor of the first reading, please raise your hand. Okay, okay, all in favor, ten zero. Good. Sure, go ahead.
Be it resolved that the bylaw now be approved as a city bylaw, and that it be entitled City of Charlottetown procedural bylaw, and it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Deputy Mary Yankoff.
Shall it carry? Pass, okay, great, ten zero. Okay, thank you, Counselor Beck. Thank you for your flexibility. Working with your fellow counselors? Yes, sir. Go ahead, Counselor Ramsey?
So when do we start the second Tuesday? Oh, we didn't do the second.
No, 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 it's not all done yet.
Sorry, I'm sorry, we didn't, we got to do the second reading first.
Not yet. Don't rush the process. Jeez, don't want to do that. Okay. We have a motion to move into a closed session as per section 119 subsection 1E of the Municipal Government Act of Prince Abir Allen. And E is a matter still under consideration on which the council has not yet publicly announced a decision, and about which discussion in public would likely prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its negotiations. And it's in reference to the housing accelerator. Yeah, we're going, just one sec. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, so we're going to a closed session. Can we just take a?
On second, Councilor Dron, we just have to vote on this.
We're open.
Yeah, okay, so I'm going, we're back into open session. Called to order, declarations of conflict of interest, none. And the agenda is one item. Do you want to read that resolution? CAO Eleanor Muhammad. And thank you, Janice and Donna, Donna Miller Ayton.
Moved by Councilor Beck, seconded by Deputy Mary Ankaughth. Be it resolved that council approves the proposal to enter into the Housing Accelerator Fund contribution agreement with the Canadian more housing and mortgage corporation. And further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay, moved, seconded. Yep, okay. The question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, unanimous.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Twill against nine one.
Motion adjourned.
And motion adjourned, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Dron. All those in favor?
Thank you, Melanie.